Hi, I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Good evening and thank you for being here. I just want to point out that tonight is the last full working meeting for Shelley Benford and Sam Fuqua. And it's, of course, I've been serving with them for six years, so it's a big change for our board. I also wanted to point out that the next meeting on December 3rd is when we swear in the two new members. We'll also have an hour starting at 5:00 to honor Sam and Shelley's service and to reflect on their contributions to the district. And following the swearing in and the seating of the new board members is the organizational meeting where we shuffle up the leadership of the board and decide who's going to be the new leadership. So those are just what's coming up on December 3rd. And with that, this is the superintendent's report. Thanks.
Thank you, Board President Marquess. Board members, I want to start my comments by, I want to thank Joel Rivera, Principal of Alicia Sanchez Elementary School, and Bianca Gago, Principal of Columbine Elementary School. We had a great school visit, and I want to thank all the board members that were able to attend. Board, as you've heard within the past month, the report on the work happening in those schools. I'm very excited about the progress that they're making. I'm very, there's lots of promising practices that we're seeing at both those schools. And I just want to thank the board for being so involved and caring so deeply that you took time out of your schedules today to attend. I thought that was really wonderful. I've got a couple of events coming up that I want to share with you all and with the public. This Sunday, from 12:30 to 4:00, I'll be attending the Struggling Readers 2019 Symposium at, actually presenting and providing some comments. This is a conference symposium held by BV Kid. And as you know, and as those in our community would know, very strong advocates for students with dyslexia. And, you know, off of the presentation that we presented to you all a few weeks ago on some of the things we're doing, I'll be speaking to the pilot. And just, I'm excited for our continued partnership with BV Kid. They've pushed our thinking in regards to how we support kids, and we're working together now, and so I'm excited for that event. On Wednesday, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the Centaurus High School Library, we will be hosting a community meeting to discuss what skills our students need to succeed after graduation. Board members, you'll know that one of our long-term student outcomes in our new strategic plan is every student graduates empowered with the skills necessary for postgraduate success. We believe that's more than a high school diploma, that there's a set of skills that we need to intentionally embed within our standards and our content to make sure that kids are ready for whatever life brings to them after high school. And so, it's a community-wide event. Everybody's welcome to attend to provide input and feedback. And again, that's Wednesday, November 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the Centaurus High School Library. And finally, Sam and Shelley, this is your last meeting. I will forever be grateful to both of you for not only your dedication to this community as public servants, but your dedication to my success in helping me onboard as a new superintendent in this community. You are both incredible public servants. I will be forever thankful and grateful, and hopefully you still stay involved in education in our community because you all are leaders. And we're going to miss both of you very, very much. That's all I have.
All right, any questions for the superintendent? Okay, with that, we're going to proceed to public participation. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that this meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, which won't be the case this evening, public comment continues at the end of the meeting. And then finally, recognize that students often attend or review our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. All right, so we have one speaker this evening, and it is Calvin Reeve.
his culture, or kind of like his motives and desire of which he's trying to strive for. And so when I started looking around at different things such as metrics within the different schools within our district, and I look at things like at peak to peak and stuff like that, and there's some great success stories out of that school, I wonder why are we not leaning on those particular schools and trying to figure out what success is coming out of there and replicating that at other schools? I also question or talk to other parents around, you know, what was your experience over at Monarch, or what is your experience at this school or that school? And there's so much variation. I just, I try to understand how that helps our children grow and actually, I guess grabbing onto those things that we know are tangible and going to benefit our kids. I've got a student who struggles at times, and, you know, it's just to the point where last year we had a lot of conversations with the principal. There were great conversations, there was some changes, had some great conversations with the Southwest Superintendent's Office, great conversations. But I'm seeing repetitive stuff again this year, and I'm trying to think as to why that has continued to occur. It goes back to the same thing with, you know, Einstein says. And the other thing I want to point out is that there's a lot of parents who've actually chosen to homeschool their kids this year. And looking at the competitive nature of online schools, which I saw the notice from BVSD and some other things, the whole industry itself is getting extremely challenging to basically support our children. And we really need to figure out a way to, yeah, just improve upon each school and take those successes and populate them throughout instead of having random methodologies, I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that concludes public participation. And we can move on to our next item, which is board communication. So board members, who would like to start off? Richard.
Well, I want to thank the speaker. Did he leave? Anyway, well, I thought he brought up some good points, but I think we need to start looking at some of those similarities that occur in different schools and stuff like that. But I also want to give a big shout out to Manhattan School of the Arts. They hosted the CUSPIDA Conference. When was that, last weekend?
Two weekends ago.
Two weekends ago. And I think we had pretty close to a couple of hundred parents there this time around. It was huge. Huge success. And also to the principal, John Riggs, and the liaison there, Sandra Sandoval, who did, Sandra Sandoval, who did a really great job in terms of making sure that everything was going smoothly. And the speakers from the district that went and spoke for the, what they called the cafecitos in the afternoon. It was really, really a huge success. And Rob was there, and he talked a little bit about, you know, what the school district is doing to support the parents, and it was just wonderful. So, big kudos to Manhattan School of the Arts. The reason I'm saying that is because, and the teachers there that shared their classrooms because, you know, when you have teachers that share classrooms, then you don't get a lot of negative feedback after a big conference like that. That was really, really huge for us, or for that group of planners. The Centaurus High School Community, is that tomorrow night?
Yes.
At what time?
6:00 p.m.
Ah, great. And that's all I have.
Richard, one question. I went to the summit last year, but I wasn't able to attend this year. Was there anything, and you could answer this now or just in an email, anything that popped out or something new that you learned that was particularly interesting or thought-provoking?
All of them were.
Yeah.
But the one that I, because I didn't attend all of them, you know, because there was only like about maybe four or five sessions going on. The one that I did attend, and I stood for a while, was the bullying session. The parents were really asking a lot of questions, and who was the one that did the facilitation for the bullying?
Gabby.
Gabby. She did an excellent job in terms of talking about what Angivine does around bullying. And parents were really curious to find out, because she presented a program that's Angivine, and she's, is that program in every other school? Because parents were really, really focused on that particular program. And it seemed like it's not. So there was some inconsistencies in that, you know, and then when the speaker was talking about that, I was thinking about that too, because they're, not all schools are all consistent in terms of what programs they have in place, so, yeah.
Thanks. Okay, next, Donna.
I just have a quick question. Rob, maybe you can answer, because a parent communicated with me. Is the deadline for vaccination still December 2nd? And do I understand it's about 1,100 kiddos? And what's the process for them to bring in proof?
So, just to clarify, this isn't a deadline for vaccinations. It's a deadline to give us the information on whether students are vaccinated or not. It is December 2nd. A few weeks ago, we had 1,100 folks who hadn't told us where they were at. I just want to be clear that, you know, we just want the information. We think that's important. If parents choose to vaccinate or not, they have the absolute right to decide that. We're not, you know, getting into that conversation. It's just getting the information. I know that our staff has been, and principals have been contacting, and will be doing so between the next several weeks to do everything that we can. So December 2nd is a non-event, and it's just the deadline. So we're working very closely with our families, with our schools, to ensure that we have that information and come into compliance with the law.
Can I just add? I just want to reiterate how extraordinarily thorough your communication has been to parents who had not provided the information through the multiple texts, phone calls, emails that went to me and my daughter. So, and you did not miss a communication method available. All right, other questions, board members? Kathy?
First, since this is our last official meeting, I just want to say thank you to Sam and Shelley. It's been an honor serving with you, and I've learned a lot from your conversations and your passion and your commitment to the school district. And so, I'll say something on December 3rd, but thank you for everything that you've done. I've really, I really have learned a lot from both of you, so, thank you. I hope we can continue to try to fill the big shoes that you're going to be leaving because it's been great serving with you. Today, I was able to go to a meeting that Senator Story convened. She's having listening sessions around the state on, she's trying to figure out what the best bill would be to take forward to modify the way we evaluate teachers. So thank you to some of the people from the administrative staff who were there, and to the teachers who were there. And I hope we can continue that conversation because what her intent is, as I understand it, is that she doesn't want to modify this for what she thinks is best. She wants to hear what's working and what's not working. And she starts the meeting off not with what isn't working, but what are the good things about what we're currently doing? So, thank you to the district for hosting her, and thank you for those who were able to show up. And I had one other thing, Tina, but I now can't remember what it is, so.
We can come back to you. Okay. Katie?
I just will reiterate what Rob and Kathy have said, that I so appreciated working with Sam and Shelley, and I too have learned a lot. Probably not as much as Kathy, because I didn't have as many years, but I appreciate it, and I'm going to miss working with you all.
Okay, I have to hear. Any comments?
I'll say a few words. Despite how it may seem sometimes, I feel nothing but gratitude for having been able to serve on the school board for the last eight years. I think it's rare that someone has the opportunity to be in a position where they can impact many people's lives in this kind of role, and especially children's lives where the, what we decide has an exponential impact. So, I just feel really grateful to have had that opportunity. I'm specifically grateful for the progress we've made on dyslexia and student data privacy. But I think the thing that I'm most happy about, Rob, is you, that you're here. I think that your transparency, your vision, your systemic way of looking at problems is, it's not only a relief for me, but it's a promise, you know, for all the good things, I think, that are in store for the school district. So I'm just really, really glad that you're here. I would say also that we've been through a lot in the last eight years as a district, but we've managed to get through it, and I think we're better for all of our struggles. And I feel really, really optimistic about what's to come for the district. And I think that I will leave a little bit sad because I think we could have accomplished more, but there's probably no one who's ever sat in this job who didn't feel that way. So, I think it's just part of the game. So again, I'm really positive, I'm really grateful for all the positive changes that have happened, but I'm also really grateful that my eight years are up. And I would like to thank all of those who came before me who advocated for term limits because I am a fan. And I would also like to publicly say, I've said this to Rob, but I would like to publicly say that I am for hire for the next person who would like to write a school finance bill that actually works. So, please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Well, I would second Shelley's comments about Rob. That was a good vote, you know, and hopefully, look back a few years, I'll maybe think that was the best vote I made, so, no pressure. Let me first welcome Lisa Marin Sweeney and Stacy Ziss, who were elected last week to fill the seats that Shelley and I occupied. Thank you for stepping up. You'll be joining five very smart, very friendly, and highly engaged colleagues, as well as an excellent superintendent. So, thanks for your service and for stepping up. The thing I was thinking about was, we had that school visit that Rob mentioned, or school visits to Columbine and Sanchez this morning. And I had visited them several times, including early in my board tenure. And it made me think about what you learned quickly in this role, that the district is a big ship, and it turns very slowly, if at all, right, sometimes. And there's good reasons for that most of the time, right? You know, we want to be careful. We don't want to change for the sake of change. We want to be deliberate in our process and involve all stakeholders and make sure we're methodical as we roll out change. That has always budded up for me against the idea that a year is a long time in the life of a child, you know? And sometimes, we got to move faster, right? So I was just thinking about that today when I was over at those schools. You know, I didn't prepare any remarks, but that just came to me right now, so. I'll have more to say on December 3rd. Okay? Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
That was great. Oh.
I remembered. I also wanted to say welcome to Lisa and to Stacy, and that I look forward to serving with you, and thank you for stepping up. And you've actually braved some of these meetings, and you're still here, and so I guess we weren't able to deter you, but we're really looking forward to working with you. And I wanted to say thanks publicly to Laura, because she has set up all of these meetings for us, makes sure that we get there on time, sends us out emails ahead of time, set up the meetings today. I know if I'm lost or I'm going to be late, I can call Laura and she can set me straight. So, thank you for setting all that up and for getting us through what you've gotten us through so far, because today I had to like call you and say, "I'm running late, what do I do?" And she's so calm all the time. So, thank you for setting up everything that you do for us, because we couldn't, we wouldn't be here without you. So thank you very much.
Okay, so we'll look forward to December 3rd, and enjoy the rest of your last working voting.
I have several motions prepared.
You have several motions prepared. It's going to be a long evening as Sam and Shelley finish up their last loose ends. So our next item is Strategic Plan, is an information item, 6.1, Strategic Plan 6A.
So, board members, as Margaret comes up, just as a reminder, 6A is one of the strategic initiatives that we are starting this year, and it is to define and put into place culturally responsive principles and best practices that challenge inequity and bias. This is a very important priority for us, and so I'm excited to share the progress that we've made to date. And with that, I'll turn it over to our area superintendent for the Northwest Support Network, Margaret Crespo.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Good evening, President Marquess, members of the board. Margaret Crespo, area superintendent for the Southwest Network. I am so excited to launch this work. Our strategic plan is coming along very nicely. Lots of amazing people doing incredible work every day, meeting with our community and making those connections so that we're doing the right work for our students. I'm going to really just hand this over to a wonderful team of people who have kind of taken this on and worked together over the last couple of months, and are really just bringing a snapshot of where they are. One of our goals this year is to make sure that the board is up to date on where we're going with our strategic plan, what that looks like, how it unfolds. We've had a couple of meetings before with just updates, and this is our first true look and launch at what we're doing around our strategic team 6A, which is culturally responsive best practices. Sorry about my voice. I would like to introduce Ari Garzon Kessler, who is our Director of Equity and Partnerships, and Tammy Lawrence, who is our Director of School and Support Services. Lots of title changes this year, so working through those. Student Support Services. And they will come up and kick us off on our journey this evening around 6A.
So it's great to see all of you this evening. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you some of the highlights of our work on the 6A team. And in addition to Tammy and I sharing, Kathleen Sullivan and Mike Grados are going to be sharing some of the other aspects of our 6A work with you in a short while. And this graphic is just a helpful reminder of where 6A fits within the overarching strategic plan. You can see it in that box on the far right side. And as Dr. Anderson mentioned, it's focused on defining and putting into practice culturally responsive practices and principles that challenge inequity and bias. And as you can see in the timeline, 6A was deemed as one of the most important ones to launch early in this phase of the strategic plan. So you can see it up there with 1A and 1B and a few of the other key initiatives that launched last spring. So this graphic provides a helpful overview for you of the five major action steps of 6A. As you can see from the checkmarks, we've already accomplished two of the five. We, in terms of the PD and prevention equity, Tammy and her team led trainings for hundreds of BVSD staff members this summer and fall. And we also led a culturally responsive set of sessions for all of our new educators at NEO. And then you can also see on the far right, Mike Grados and the team in HR have reviewed for culturally responsive hiring practices. The additional three elements are all in progress, and that's what we're going to be sharing primarily highlights with you this evening. We're also in the process of seeking input from an array of advisory groups because, like any initiative, we want to make sure, as you all were just sharing, having as many stakeholders involved and their voices shaping the work that we want to do. So I now want to share with you some of the key highlights around that fifth box, the Framework for Culturally Responsive Guiding Principles, because that's a significant task we're tackling with our team. So there are three major components to the framework. One is instructional practices. The other one is really looking at the individual BVSD employee level. And then finally, really looking deeply at all aspects of our system and developing culturally responsive principles and components to guide the work. So going back to the instructional practices, we began doing work last summer, looking at some of the best practices from around the country, and deciding on what practices might be most effective to infuse in every classroom across BVSD. And as we began that work gathering best practices, we realized the natural overlay and integration with the 1A and 1B team that's really looking at instructional practices. So, our leadership teams for both initiatives, particularly 1B and our 6A, are meeting regularly to discuss some of the ways to integrate what we're learning about culturally responsive teaching best practices with the work of their team. And in addition to that, 11 directors and coordinators last month across four different departments went and saw Zaretta Hammond in Denver, and she's one of the national experts on culturally responsive teaching. And based on that and her framework, we're really looking at how do we infuse elements of the framework with her best practices, as well as some of the ones we've picked up from around the country. Based on the fact that we're really meeting regularly with the 1B team, we've decided as a 6A team to primarily put our focus on those other two dimensions, the individual BVSD employee level, and then our system as a whole. And this work at the individual and the system level, we really commenced about three or four weeks ago, so it's very fresh. But going to share with you a few of the highlights from the last month or so. So on the individual level, we really want to build capacity across all of our employees, and our team has begun to explore the question of what are the key elements for cultural competence? And we're creating a document that's essentially a self-assessment that would be a springboard for a lot of future work in helping individuals identify their current state of cultural competency, and then the ways in which they want to strengthen and develop it. And then the final area of our focus is on systems, principles, and components that will really inform all aspects of our BVSD system. And we really took time to look at districts across the country. Dr. Anderson shared a few promising districts with me two summers ago, so Pittsburgh, Chapel Hill, Montgomery County, Maryland, and really looking at districts that have been doing this work for several years and pulling what we can learn from them, as well as just other experts around the country. And out of that, we identified these six major areas that we feel are helpful lenses to make our district continuously more culturally responsive. So, making sure that we're creating a system that centers on relationships, promotes continuous ongoing learners for all, utilize a data-driven approach, in particular to assess our growth as a culturally responsive system, that we're consistently addressing disparities in equity, and using that data-driven approach to measure our progress on those disparities and reveal those areas of inequity. And then, the final two areas is that we're committed to growing our cultural competence, and we're embodying a culturally responsive teaching pedagogy. and we're embodying a culturally responsive teaching pedagogy, which is at the core of that partnership work we're doing with Initiative 1B. We really want these guiding principles to be applied explicitly to several key priority areas. So we're also developing what are the aspects of our system where we should really look closely and apply these as a lens. And just to give you a few examples, one of course would be student opportunities, growth, and achievement. Another area that, that Mike's going to share in a few minutes is around hiring, recruitment, retention, and development. And then another example would be in the area of school, family, and community partnerships. And on this team of 6A, there's about 20 of us and we span pre-K to 12. It includes teachers, administrators, community partners, allies at CU Boulder, and district leaders. And we're really collaborating to reach consensus and develop this framework that will hopefully incorporate some of the, the leading ideas right now in the field. We meet again tomorrow. We dive in for three hours each, each session and our aim is to develop fully this framework by March 1st, which was the, the goal we, we set out at the end of last school year. So that gives you a sense of those three elements, the individual level, which we're still developing what that would look like, and then the principles to guide our system and the instructional practices that we're going to weave in with the 1B team efforts. So the next component of what we wanted to share with you tonight is around student behavior and bullying prevention. Our belief is that if 6A is effectively implemented, the potential for bullying significantly decreases because our entire system becomes more culturally responsive. And we've created extensive feedback from parents across cultures and they've made it really clear that bullying is one of their top priorities and should be one of ours too, whether it's at the CUSP Day, the Latino Parent Summit, or at our Latino Parent Advisory Council, in a host of different forums, we're hearing from our families, bullying needs to be a priority. So we've been really intentional about weaving that in and my colleague Tammy Lawrence is going to share with you more of the progress, a lot of progress that's been made in these last few months.
So I just want to mention, one of the, on these slides, we were very intentional. You can see the watermark there that says draft and I just want to make sure that we address the reason. Two major pieces. One, when you think about how large the strategic plan is and how all of these strategies are coming into play at the same time, and there are a lot of moving pieces and parts and we're learning every day about where our district is moving, we want to make sure that we leave space for when we hear feedback or when we are doing our practices and working with some of the others. You heard Ari specifically talk about 1B. That's a very heavy lift when we talk about instructional practices. We want to be able to say that we've got some flexibility as we're presenting to the board and our community. As things come up and we need to make adjustments, we don't want to be so tied to these that the language then becomes golden before we have an opportunity to really reach out in all of the other strategic areas. So I just wanted to make sure that I called that out and then I will call Tammy Lawrence up and she can move on to our behavior and bullying prevention. Thank you.
Good evening. Part, part of the work that we've been doing, we've gotten the parent feedback, but we've also been diving into data. And so looking at our school culture climate survey, students at grades 5 through 12, 55 percent of students have reported that students in their buildings have been bullied and 60% of students in their buildings have been called names or had been teased. We looked at the Healthy Kids survey data. 20% of Hispanic or other race students identified being bullied in their schools. 28.4% of youth identified as lesbian, gay, bisexual had been reported as being bullied as well. And our trans students are seven times more likely than our cisgender students to stay home or miss school because they do not feel safe at school. So what we have been doing as a department, we've really been collaborating with multiple departments, knowing that this is something that we need to address as a system. The first area that we started with was Student Support Services collaborated with Safety and Security and the Legal Department on student behavior and discipline practices. We really want to create a culture and consistent manner of how we're dealing with student behaviors across the district. And so we started at high level with looking at threat assessments. We are now providing support to schools in a consistent manner across the district for all of our threat assessments. We began to look at our discipline practices and our policies around that. The Office of Student Support Services is frequently working with stu, with our schools and providing supports for that. So we really look to our policies, our policies and our guidebook to give them the support that they need, so we're providing that consistent practice across that. We are, will be looking at policies throughout the rest of this year with the work that Kathleen will share in her presentation and developing a toolkit for all administrators that they will have in the fall. We also have met through our assistant principal, we've met with all of our assistant principals, provided them a hard copy of our Discipline Practices and Attendance Handbook. And all of our documents in that handbook are also available online and are being maintained by the Office of Student Support Services. The other exciting news that we have done, beginning in May, the Office of Student Support Services, the Office of Health, and our MTSS department began collaboration with Oasis in, through Boulder County. We were working with our Youth Advocating for Change organization. Through the summer, we developed a professional development for our teachers that really gave a great overview of what bullying is, how do we address it, how do we support our students? And to date, we've had 15 departments participate in that professional development, roughly 500 employees. We also have through our new website, a bullying page as a resource for students, parents, and staff that they can go to to get additional resources. Our presentation really defined for educators what is bullying, defined what students' rights are, talked about what that looks like from bullying to harassment, what our school responses should look like to support students and to support our families. Talked about microaggressions and what that, what that looks like and how that happens repeatedly and how that can lead to bigger things for students. And provide strategies and interventions for our educators on how to support our, our students and our families. And it also gave a really good overview of the bystander effect and what that looks like when you're part of conversations around bullying and you're not, you're not speaking up for the person that's being bullied. We provided in this slide deck, all of the resources that were used for that presentation. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kathleen Sullivan and she can talk more about the policies and practices that we'll be reviewing that connects with our discipline practices and our bullying policy.
And thanks to Tammy for the last slide showed you all the various laws that we're trying to bring in and integrate into sensible policy that will then lead to consistent and best practice across the district. From a policy perspective, it's really pretty straightforward. This board has already taken on some hard work this year when looking at policies. So the main impetus of all of these federal laws is to really make sure that we have policies that prohibit harassment on the basis of protected status. So you'll remember the work that we did together on Policy AC to make sure that it is comprehensive and really puts in place all the protections required by the federal laws. Then state law requires that, and I think this is part of honestly why a lot of school boards have, have been questioned about what our, our policies look like. It's because the state law in Colorado has been around since 2001 and it specifically requires a policy to address bullying prevention and education. The first point, I think, as Ari and Tammy have already talked about is, it really is supposed to start by looking at our own data and what our students say about the severity of bullying they're experiencing at school. So it's important that we're taking that survey data and using that to inform the work. As I said, one of the big pieces the board's already accomplished this year, that was a revision to Board Policy AC. It is actually non-discrimination and equal educational opportunity, not harassment. That's my error. You also earlier in the year had looked at Board Policy JB that also incorporates those important elements of making sure that all students are respected at school. Our next work that will be, it's going to be a big lift, I'm not going to lie. You have Policy JFC on student conduct that has that state-required definition of bullying and prohibits bullying by students. We need to now bring all of our policies on student conduct and discipline into alignment. We're going to be doing that work in January and February, making sure that we've heard this board's direction, that we get input from principals and teachers, and that that's reflected in the policy that we bring to you. So we anticipate doing that work in January and February and having proposed revised draft policies in March.
I just like coming up here. So next, I'd like to introduce Mike Grotos. He's going to cover our HR recruitment and hiring policies, practices.
Thank you, Margaret. President Marques, members of the board, Dr. Anderson. This is probably one of the most exciting aspects of the job I have in terms of human resources and it's the people, right? And we all know that one of the culturally responsive hiring and recruitment practices is people of color. And people of color really reflect, our students can really have a big impact on learning. Okay, we all know that. So what I'm here to do tonight is to give you kind of an overview of what we have reviewed in our hiring and recruitment practices here in BVSD. Now, you all know that I've been here, this is my third year and I've had a couple of years to really look at this. And we've come up with some really interesting gaps that we need to address. And my team over here, Lauren Lowe, who is our recruiting manager, and I have Katie Mills, our Director of Professional Learning, and I have my, Melissa Ribery, our Director of HR, who handles primarily licensed staff, have been having these conversations. And they can attest that I'm pretty passionate about this and I push pretty hard. And we're going to continue to push hard on this. So I want to start with the idea of Boulder Valley has always had the, the, the topic or the issue of always wanting to recruit people of color, right? And I think I came to you the last two years and I think just this last year in August, I gave you a little bit of a report on the increments of the little increments we've made of the people of color since 2016, right? And it hasn't been that much, so something has to be done, something much more bolder has to be done. And I don't mean B-O-U-L-D-E-R. I mean B-O-L-D-E-R, okay? So with that, I want to give you kind of some data to start with. We look at the teachers of color in our district, we're about 13%, okay? There's just no excuse for that. And if you look at the students of color, that's 31%. That's a big gap. That's a great gap, okay? But in order for us to hire a diverse workforce, we're going to need to double this, the people of color in our district by, in five years. Now that's a big, bold goal. All right? So it's going to be a system. It's going to take a system to make this happen. And what I like about this position and what I like about this strategic plan, it's written in the strategic plan. And you've seen the whole idea of let it be written, let it be done. Okay, so that's what we're looking forward to. So, we have created in draft, I know these don't have draft on there, but four strategies that we want to share with you tonight. We want to redesign an innovative recruitment program that emphasizes the whole idea of diverse backgrounds, effective teachers, especially teachers and administrators of color, okay? Redesign the whole thing. Because as we looked at our recruitment practices in the last couple of years, it's not innovative enough. It's just not enough for us. So we want to make it a year-round process. Because most of the time that when we do recruiting, it's always seasonal. It's always getting close to the hiring season. Oh my gosh, we got to go out and recruit, okay? We're starting to set up some things right now that will help us do this year-long seasonal, or not seasonal, but year-long practice of recruiting. I know Lauren has already, has already started some conversations with some of the institutions, not only in Colorado but outside the state, to actually recruit student teachers of color. Find out who the students are going into those programs of color that we can actually start having conversations with. Okay? The partnerships with universities will be critical. The partnerships that we have in our local community, the Latino Parent Advisory Committee, the El Paso, the Parity, the NAACP will be critical. What we're wanting to do, not only with licensed staff, but we're wanting to get our classified staff within schools that can speak a different language to help our parents. Okay? Also tapping those, those people to actually give us some resources. Maybe areas that we're not recruiting that we should find out where they're at. So it's pretty bold. So the recruitment, that's just kind of the lick of the cone that I'll give you because there's a lot more that are going to go into this and you're going to find as we come back and report to you, we're going to have action plans that will rebuild this out and report back how we're doing. Selection process. Now, this is going to be somewhat of how people perceive and the perception of what HR does. We don't do the hiring. We go out, we do, we're recruiting. It's the principals and the hiring managers that do the hiring. So what we propose to do is leveraging what are the schools currently at in terms of kids of color and their staff of color and making that a goal. We're trying to get more people of color within their schools. So, meaning that we will do a better job, more intense job and purposeful job of trying to find those, those people of color to come to our schools, to be interviewed, considered, and hired. Strategy three, the retention. Now, you'll see the 92% up there only because although we don't have a lot of people of color, we retain them. But there's still 8% that I'm not, that we're not happy with. What about those 8%? What's happening with those, with those great people that leave us? So we want to make sure we identify those institutional barriers, what that means, what that, what, what those are. We want to increase our mentoring practices. Now, we do some mentoring practices for people who need it, if they need another year. We do a year-long mentoring, but we can do another year, but we want to look at even more as to what we can do. Establishing the partnerships with our nonprofits. Melissa Ribery right now serves as one of the board members for Habitat for Humanity. Because living in Boulder County is expensive. That is one of the areas that hurts us, okay? However, there's ways to go around that. As I think you probably know, we, we have a, a partnership with Landed. Landed is an organization that helps with down payment. We have currently about 85 employees that have taken advantage of that. Okay? And of course then to review and update our exit interviews, what else we can get from that, what is, can we dig in deeper, do a deeper dive on what that means and why people of color are leaving BVSD? Strategy four, the pipeline. How do we create a robust talent continuum that develops our teachers and administrators of color in BVSD? Again, you know, enhancing those partnerships with universities that want to partner with us, who embrace a diverse teaching workforce are definitely universities and institutions we want to speak with. One of the things that's come up is student teachers who of color of possibly incentivizing them somehow to come to Boulder Valley and teach and then eventually get a job with us within our ranks. We do have a program called Pathways to Teaching and the Cadet Program. We actually, and it was Melissa Ribery and Mary Jill Boat, I believe, that actually went out and did an audit on what those, what those classes and courses are doing. They're not doing enough. We need more. We need more to enhance that and we need to help them with soliciting and getting more of our kids of color to become teachers. And then of course, as in, in the whole strategic plan right now, what's happening is we're starting to encourage leadership within the people of color within our own district to work on the strategic plan. So giving them those opportunities so that they'll stay and stay adherent in BVSD. So we got a lot of work ahead of us, but this is something we're passionate about, but it's also something that we're pushing in human resources that can go out systemically through the strategic plan and it won't take just HR, it'll take the whole system to make this happen. So, I think we're ready for questions. So I think we're ready for questions.
Okay, so here I am for cleanup. So just all around excited, all of our work, HR, legal, 6A, the work with bullying and the work with our equity partnerships. Obviously, you can tell this is amazing work that impacts many, many departments, many systems, and the work that these individuals have put into place is unbelievable. You can feel it throughout the whole district, and we're very excited as we move forward and just very happy to be the first ones to launch our update. Now, we're ready for questions. Mike, come on up here.
Thank you so much. This was fantastic, and I'll just make one comment. You talked a lot about culturally responsive training, and I realize that I've never had any training about being culturally responsive or about my biases. And I think about whether the board should have that opportunity as well to be part of this system when we review policies or do budgets, so if you have a thought around that and can help connect us, maybe that's something we should talk about.
Yes. We can make that happen.
Yeah, okay. So with that, what questions do we have or comments? Kitty?
Okay, I have a few questions. When we're looking at the slide on the climate survey, what is the historic, how does what these kids have said recently compared to the historical data?
We are actually, we will get new data next week, and so we will be reviewing the new data next week with this data and really looking at what we're doing system-wide to support the growth. We know that we have a baseline and we've got this, that we, this situation where our students are not feeling safe and they're feeling bullied, so we've got to start from here. So we're going to take this data that we have here and then look at this current data that's coming in next week and then create a plan from there.
Okay. And I know Richard had mentioned that Angivine has some good anti-bullying program.
PBS or something?
PBIS.
Are there districts nationwide that we can look to that have done it right and have reduced the bullying?
Right, we are starting that work as well, and we're having a lot of conversations around curriculum. PBIS, MTSS, how can we support our schools in that, in that space? And we, knowing that we've had a lot of school-based interventions in place and school-based education practices, we are looking to define that more as a system-wide, what can we do and how can we narrow that down so we can ensure that all students across our district, north, south, east, or west, are getting the same level of education around bullying and the prevention work that we can do and the support that we can provide for all parents as well.
And I think I had one more. Oh, and this would, I guess, I don't know who this is for, but do we get student teachers from outside Colorado? Is that common? Okay. And they just come and move here for a semester?
Who wouldn't move to Colorado?
No, I'm just saying how expensive it would be for a student to have to move here from someplace else.
I actually just got an email from a candidate who is coming out of USC in California just today. So we have a partnership already started with Iowa State, who, someone at Iowa State had a connection with Chris Meyer, and so that's how that got started. But yes, we have, it's a handful right now. It's not, you know, a significant number, but we definitely have people from out of state, and that's what we want to expand.
Thank you.
And Donna wants to comment on that.
I just thought it's an excellent idea to bring the student teachers in from out of state. And we often open our home to vet students that are training, and so oft, it might be something to consider to put out there to the community to open their home because it's awful expensive to come here and live and then student teach for free. But we've done that for vet interns through the Humane Society.
It's an excellent idea. Thank you.
Kitty, we don't.
So one of the public perceptions that's out there and that I've talked with our superintendent about that troubles me is that we say we only hire three to five new teachers because we're so good in Boulder that we don't need to, we only hire seasoned teachers. And that seems to fly in the face of this, reaching out to hiring employees of color. And I'm wondering if we're going to change that narrative or if it's staying the same or how we're addressing that. Because that's always been a concern I have is that it seems to me that if, as good as we are, that we should be bringing more early teachers on to train them and help them grow in our system and stay in our system. So I'm just curious if that's a misperception, but I hear that pretty frequently, and we see it repeated in the numbers that we see of the numbers of teachers that we bring on. And so it just kind of struck me as an inconsistency. I don't know if you can answer that, Dr. Anderson?
So whether they are experienced teachers of color or brand-new teachers of color, I think that, I don't think we've differentiated in that regard. I think that, you know, as Mike has talked about, you know, a multi-pronged approach to addressing this, I think that it could potentially result in some newer teachers being hired. But the objective is really to diversify our teaching staff to make sure that it reflects the students that we serve. And as passionate as Mike is about that, I'm right there with him. We've talked about the opportunity that we have here to really make a difference in this regard. And so I think that as we do the audit, as Mike spoke to in regards to our hiring practices, Kathy, that will begin to tell us, you know, what that looks like, but the narrative won't change until we start hiring teachers of color, period. So, I mean, I think that that's what we really have to be focused on.
And all I'd say to that is it's always been a priority, but I'm happy to see this moving up the list. And it just seems like there's some things we have to change about how we look at things if we're going to change the outcomes. So can you explain, Mike, what the Cadet Program is? I was really happy to see, or Margaret, the, on the path, the pipeline, the idea of kind of growing our own since we have 30-some percent of students of color, and we see fewer and fewer students going into teaching for a variety of reasons. I think that's hopefully a promising practice. And so, but I didn't know, I understand the pathways, but I wasn't really sure about the Cadet Program.
The Cadet Program really works very similarly. The Cadet, Teacher Cadet Program is a CTE program, and that has been around for many, many years. Pathways to Teaching is new and is a concurrent enrollment class. What's nice about Pathways to Teaching right now is that students who participate, and I think they need a certain grade in Pathways to Teaching, and meet the minimum qualifications for CU, they're automatically accepted into the School of Education. And Teacher Cadet is not working the same way at this point, but that's what we'd really like to do, to see what are the strengths of both programs, and focus on strategically reaching out to students of color to see if they are interested in that and then giving them experiences. And then through the Grow Your Own, we've started conversations with CU and Friends and looking at a couple of other places to see if we can put a program together so that we can support some of our students through their college experience and so that they do, you know, don't have any barriers going through college and then come back and teach for us.
Yeah, that seems really important to support them through college, not just while they're with us, right?
Right. And financially, as well as mentorship, to support them in all that they need.
And are the Pathways programs available to all the high schools? At least all our comprehensive high schools?
No, at this point, no. It's available to all high schools, not all high schools are implementing it.
Is it a goal to have all our comprehensive high schools implement that?
We haven't discussed that at this point in time, no.
Which schools is it currently offered at?
Boulder, Brumfield, and Centaurus. And we also, well, yep, there we go, that's all.
Just a couple more questions. How did you pick the districts, Dr. Anderson, for the comparison that Ari talked about? What were they doing that you thought showed promising practices that we would want to follow or emulate? And I think you said Montgomery County and a few others. I was just curious what they were doing that looked promising.
It was a conversation that started at the beginning of last year as we were talking about our Equity Summit and the idea of it's, who's moved beyond talking about equity, right? Like who's actually started to look at, you know, and the research that I did was around who out, without, within the country has done something we would refer to as an equity scorecard, right? Where, you know, so as we talked just previously about some of the metrics, who has been able to quantify some of that? And so we just did a kind of review of what's happening across the country and gave some of those resources to Ari. And so those were some districts, I think Jefferson County in Kentucky as well was another district that was mentioned, to begin to start to really think about who's doing more than talking about equity, who's actually doing something about it? And I think that that's how we came upon that list. I will tell you, one of the districts that Ari mentioned, which I think is just doing incredible work, is in Montgomery County in Maryland, and I could share that all with you. I was just recently at a meeting and heard from their superintendent, who is an equity warrior, as others have referred to him as, and is just doing really great work there.
Yeah, I think it'd be really interesting because that could help us figure out where we want to head and learn from what others have done, right? And what's worked and what hasn't worked. And then my last question is, I think Ari said that in March, the six steps will be implemented? And I'm just curious what will look different in March after this is implemented, or is that just a structure and we won't know what's going to look different for a period of time? I just am.
So I think the slide you're talking about, it's a long presentation, is this one? Around the six steps, the six areas?
And then it was one after that, let me see. You had the six things that you were going to be implementing, it was the bullets?
Oh, these.
Yes, that one.
Yep. So this process is that these six areas will be available to start working with as we work with 1A, 1B, and the others, and really thinking about our work in each of these areas and how we're moving forward. So assuming that as this, that's why it's watermarked with a draft, assuming as we move forward with the other strategic plan pieces, and this is the language that is determined and the steps that we're taking, in March, that will all start to come together. And I'll use this, as you can see, it comes back to this timeline. This is all of the strategic plan rolled out through May 2023 and May 2024, and all of these are just gate milestones along the way to let us know that we're on track. And I'm so glad that you raised that because that's exactly why we left that watermark there, because it's just part of that larger picture as we're moving forward.
I love the idea of draft and that we don't have all the answers, and so that's why we're talking, so thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
It was a great, it was really a helpful presentation, and I learned a lot, so thank you very much.
Terrific, thank you.
It was a great presentation, and it's been a long time coming. I can recall when we were talking about hiring, retention, and promotion of people of color, and it seems like there's a process now that will probably gain a lot of traction here. The, when you're looking at the culturally responsive, or let's see here, on the aim to create a system that, and then you have the number of bullet points, grow our cultural competence, can you give me an example of what that means? I'm just wondering if it means the same thing that we had a few years ago when we had our Equity Department?
Yeah, thanks for the question. Yeah, I mean, one example would be that our staff consistently are aware of their own implicit biases, and they've had training and deeper awareness, and that that's then guiding the way they interact with their students, families, and colleagues each day, and they're becoming more reflective the more they're developing. And implicit bias would be just one of probably five of the core areas. For instance, when we trained new educators for an hour at NEO, that was one of the, one of the five dimensions we focused on around cultural responsiveness.
And I believe you probably have a number of those teachers and staff that have taken that training that are still here.
Yes, yeah.
The ones that took it during when we had the Equity Department in Montgomery.
Yeah, I mean, because of the great retention in our district, I think there's a significant percentage of our educators who are seasoned in it, but there's probably a larger percentage that have not had in-depth cultural responsive training, so I think we're excited about that future phase of the work.
Have you given any thought about, we also had what we call the TIES approach, meaning that the school districts were responsible for doing a lot of the work around culturally competency and culturally responsive teaching pedagogy. Can't remember what TIES stood for, but I think it was, if anybody can help me, that was meaning for a long time ago. Anyway, and all schools went through training, I think all school districts had their own TIES committees and stuff like that. Is that, is something like that going to take place again, or?
I think that as we, as we think about TIES, and I've actually seen that, as I was going through the archives of past superintendents, I came across Dr. Garcia's TIES process, which is really good. And I think we're getting back to some of those practices to answer directly, Richard, in regards to some of the school strategic support meetings that we're having and really focusing on data to get to root cause and figure things out. But, you know, I think that as we paint the vision for what 6A is going to mean for our district, I would say the practices that will come in line to make, us to be able to deliver on that, we'll be focused on data. I don't think it'll be specifically the TIES process. But, you know, the things that we're talking about changing are things you can measure, right? We're not, you know, we're talking about, you know, number of teachers that have been trained, we're talking about, you know, the hiring practices, we're talking about really being accountable, right? To making these things happen. And so I think that that's going to be a benefit for our school district, and I think you're going to see some differences and some changes as we begin to implement.
Just a couple more questions, and this is regarding bullying. There's a group of parents in Boulder that have been looking into bullying, Latino parents, and they have actually gone to some of the schools to ask school administrators if in fact they have a process that helps them along bullying, and lo and behold, they didn't have any, they didn't find any. And then they went back to another school, another week, no, a week later, a school called them and said, we do have a process. And I don't know whether it was the push from parents that were making these particular principals do that. You mentioned that the principals would be getting some kind of a kit?
So, Richard, that's a great question. What we recognized was that lots of our families from many different areas were having questions around bullying, and in some buildings, they were able to answer really quickly right off the bat. And in some places, because of changes or because of rehires, there were some buildings that weren't able to. Fortunately, in this situation, they called back and said, yes, we actually do have that. We do have a process, the process has been haphazard, and what we've done with this binder that we've shared with all the principals is just do an update, a restart, and say, for those of you that are new, or we missed, or you forgot, or you were on vacation, or whatever, here's this binder of all of this information that not only can you find hard copy in your office now, but you also have it in an online resource that we're keeping up. Because one of the things that I think that when we talk about our district, the district barriers that we put up is not always updating what we needed to in a timely basis. So people were using what they had available, and that's where that came from. So the Department of Student Support Services has done an amazing job of putting that all in one place. It's a lot like when you buy, this is, I'm not trying to make fun of it, but when you buy something and you're like, where are the directions? Literally, keeping up with that is really important. So we did a very strategic approach, made sure that our APs and principals were trained early on in the year so that everybody knew this is exactly what that looks like. And as we go through this system, we'll continue to train people throughout the system, because we know that a lot of times the person that answers the phone may not have that readily available so that they know what to do and what to look for and what the procedure and practice is. And then when we get to January, February, and March, it'll be even tighter because it'll be closely aligned to the board policies, which it is right now, but we're revamping as we look at statute and legislative expectations.
This is for Kathleen. Is this, is the bullying policy, is that something that we're expecting to see soon or? Because I know that we have them kind of like in different policies, but is there going to be a standalone policy on bullying?
I do expect that in the Student Code of Conduct, bullying will be specifically addressed in that description of conduct and then aligned to the discipline practices, as Dr. Crespo was speaking, was talking about.
But are we going to see a standalone policy on bullying?
If I could predict, I, so I don't know. I think that's the end. I think that's the answer is, I don't know. I think we need to hear from our community, including our teachers, our principals, this board, and families about what we need. I think we need to have that conduct specifically defined and addressed so that everyone in our community knows how it will be treated.
Because I'm hearing from families already that they're looking for a standalone policy on bullying. They want to know exactly where to go, what they can find, and what they can do to react in case their kids are being bullied or not.
Right. I think right now, if that question came to me now, I would direct parents to the Board Policy JFC on student conduct because that's the policy that has the specific definition of bullying. And then I would steer families to Board Policy AC for how they can make a complaint that they ask their school to address. Those would be the two that I would share with families now. And I hear your feedback that we need to make sure any policy revisions we do are user-friendly for our staff and our families.
But can I interject? I think this is where we talked about maybe creating a video or something like that so we're not really directing people to Policy JBF, which is somewhat difficult to navigate. And so that the expectations are more explicit in that sense, so...
Yes, I do remember the board's discussion of that and I think it's really important and valid. Not everyone likes board policy the way your lawyer likes board policy.
I personally love it the way it is, but...
Our board president does, yeah. And then the other thing is, when you were looking at the numbers of reports on bullying, these are actual reported bullying events that happen. I mean, if a kid gets bullied, then he goes to the principal and it's recorded as a reported event? Or how does that work?
So the document, the slide number you're talking about is the climate survey and that's actually a student survey. So in some cases, reported, in some cases, not. It's just how many times they felt a certain way.
Okay. Because I know that parents that have been talking to me anyway, they, their kids aren't reporting anything.
Right.
Except to them.
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a bullying follow-up. Sometimes I hear from the community, I'll address it to you, that their own child has been bullied or has been called something that is racist or anti-Semitic. And that parent wants to understand what happened to the child who said the inappropriate thing to the other child. And I think that we all want both kids to feel safe and to stay in school. But how can we help the other parents better understand our process on how we deal with the student that is saying things that are so hurtful to another student?
It's a complicated question because certainly we want to provide students and parents closure, but all students have rights, even students who do the bullying. So I think that we have to be very careful in that regard. And in my practice over the years, I think that if you build trust and consistency in practice, that you can address that. But I have never told a parent of, whose child, whether it was a fight, bullying, so on and so forth, the identity of the other child or what happened to them because that would be violating their rights. But I do understand the need for closure and I understand that that's an important process, you know, the healing process of getting over the trauma of some of these things that occur. And I think that our best bet is to create consistency in an appeals process. But being able to tell the parents of a child who's being bullied what happened to the bully, that the child who was doing the bullying specifically is not something we'll be able to do.
And we might consider coming up with language that can be shared with that parent that's consistent and provides as much information as possible without violating, of course, the rights. Because I feel like sometimes it feels like a black box to parents and they don't get, whether it's closure or just even understanding of why things are being handled the way they are.
Agreed. And inconsistent language, I think, is important. But most important, I think, for our community is that we're addressing this, that we're saying this isn't okay and we're creating consistent practice. I think we heard from a public speaker today. We spoke about this with Dak an hour ago about some of the inconsistent practices between schools. And for some of those, there's a good reason. And from others, there isn't a good reason. And when there isn't a good reason and we should be doing things the same for our parents to protect our parents and protect our kids, we have to lean in and make sure that happens. And as we think about how we're doing that systemically within our strategic plan, that's an Initiative 3A, where we're really talking about what are the things that regardless of where your kid goes to school, this is how it's handled and this is how you can clearly understand how that works and how you can appeal that. But certainly, your point around what could be, what, how much information can we share? And how can we make that consistent is a good point.
I have a follow-up to that. Are there situations, and maybe Kathleen can answer this. In my conversations with the restorative justice branch of the DA's office, we're not very consistent across our schools in the restorative justice practices that we offer. And I'm wondering if in some of these bullying instances, we couldn't be consistent in offering some restorative justice practices to try to resolve that as part of just going forward?
I would think that's a strategy that the team can consider as they're coming up with their plan. I don't know that we've given them direction to do that, but I think that's something they're considering.
Just quickly, I do appreciate that I heard a lot about not just student training, teacher training, but parent and combining all of that and giving the parents the information that they need. I didn't realize till my son was out of college and working professionally that he said, "I was bullied quite a bit in middle school." I had no clue. And when he told me what it was about, his size. But there's so much training that goes on on what is bullying, whether it's size or weight or religion or color. But I'm glad to see that that parent component's in there. Thanks.
Sam or Shelley? Okay. Okay. All right, so with that, I think we can move on to our next item. Board members, do you need a break or is everyone doing okay? Wait, I'm getting different. Two minutes, okay. Two minutes. All right, we're back from our break. And our next item is item number seven, action items consent grouping. I'll read them off. 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, October 22, 2019, Special Meeting, 7.3 Approval of Minutes, October 22, 2019, Regular Meeting, 7.4 Acceptance of Donation, Bear Creek Elementary, 7.5 Acceptance of Donation, Douglas Elementary, 7.6 Acceptance of Donation, Eisenhower Elementary, 7.7 Acceptance of Donation, Mesa Elementary, 7.8 Acceptance of Donation, Southern Hills Middle School, 7.9 Acceptance of Donation, Superior Elementary, 7.10 Language Arts Approved, District-Wide Contract Purchase for Sora Overdrive, 7.11 Grant, Career and Technical Education CTE, Expanded Concurrent Enrollment, Colorado Department of Education, 7.12 Grant, East School Network, Cole Elementary, Empowering Action for School Improvement, EASI, Colorado Department of Education 19, 7.13 Grant, Whittier International Elementary School, Playground Improvements, Grade Outdoors, Colorado 19. All right. Would anyone like to pull any items? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda by Sam? Shelley? All right, Shelley. And any discussion or clarifying questions? Okay, hearing done. Laura, would you like to call the roll?
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia? Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, our next item is number nine, Policy Action Consent Grouping. These are two policies we discussed last meeting. 9.1 Board Policy Adoption Policy IGPA Programs for Handicapped Students, Special Education. And 9.2 Policy, Board Policy Adoption Policy DJDJE Purchasing and Contracting. Do I have a motion to approve both of those policies? By Sam, seconded by Donna? I didn't see your hand. All right, any questions or discussions? Kitty?
Yes, I thought we were gonna, or we, I know we asked about DJDJE to look at adding some kind of language about companies owned by people of color.
Right.
And I didn't see that. Did I miss it?
My belief was that we were going to do that in a larger discussion, but Kathleen, update us.
That's correct. So this was a very minor technical adjustment that was needed to comply with federal purchasing.
Okay.
But the more comprehensive review is scheduled for January.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion items for these two policies? All right, hearing done. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford?
Yes.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gephardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, our next item is number 11, Policy Study 11.1, Board Policy ACC Code of Civility and Implementing Regulation ACR. These are new policies.
Board members, we've been in conversations, I've been in conversation with our teacher advisory council and staff around this idea of a code of civility. I can tell you that 99% of our interactions with our public are very positive and 99% of the interactions with the public, with staff, are positive. I would say that there's 1% where we probably could benefit from drawing some boundaries around what's acceptable, what's not, and what can staff do in the event that there is unacceptable behaviors in regards to civility. And so this is a policy that's modeled after policies like this in other districts across the country to try to really define the principles of communication and then also define for staff within a regulation on what their rights are when somebody is being uncivil and engaging them and what are the appropriate steps that they can take. And so I wanted to bring this forward a couple weeks ago. I would say that some of our staff encountered some incivility in regards to some reactions to a snow day decision that I made. And I want to be very clear that the public can be as critical of me as they'd like. I signed up for that and the law actually allows people to do that for me. But when it comes to staff, when it comes to teachers, when it comes to other folks within this district, that there are things that happen that I don't, I think that we have to draw some boundaries around what that looks like and what it should look like. And so this is a draft form and wanted to bring this forward to you all for consideration and conversation.
All right, thank you. And I appreciate you bringing this policy forward. I do feel that that's a great reason for a policy, even as reluctant as I am to add new policies since we have way too many. So any discussion or questions around this policy? Kathy?
Back to my theme for the night of restorative justice. Under the regulation, under examples and consequences, I'm wondering if we couldn't add in something around restorative justice when possible? Because I think sometimes people don't recognize what their incivility has done to someone else. And so maybe offering opportunities for those conversations might be helpful. Just a question.
I'm trying to think about how we would navigate that because you have to have two willing parties around something like that.
No, I wouldn't make it required. I would just make it an option as one of the consequences could be that you would have to go through a restorative justice process.
I think we could work on some aspirational. In particular, I say aspirational just to say it really is best, I think, when you can repair that relationship. So I think we can find some language there, absolutely.
And it seems consistent with the idea of civility.
Yes.
As a more civil way to reconcile your differences, so...
Absolutely.
Kitty?
Yeah, so I, on the same section, incivility and consequences, and one of them, restriction from school district functions and facilities. So if this is a parent who has been uncivil, and do we keep them from coming to the school?
We can.
Like, so they wouldn't come to conferences? They couldn't come pick their child up?
Typically, what we would do as a school district is we'd make an individualized plan. We still, certainly, they have rights. But we would, you know, those interactions would be very controlled. But there is on occasion, you know, if parents or guardians or whomever makes threatening comments, is, you know, people feel threatened, we certainly can do that. We have that right.
So what do we do with people who are doing this on social media? Can you block them?
I think that there, it's tough, right? And social media is a wild and crazy place, right? And I will tell you, especially as I've talked with, I've had conversations with the BVA and our teacher advisory council, it's very, very challenging because we have students, we have parents, we have other folks that, you know, would make a fake Twitter or Facebook account or create their own fake accounts so you couldn't track them and say disparaging things about folks. And I think that it is, we do everything that we can to support and protect, but people also have rights as well. So I don't know, Kathleen, do you want to comment on kind of what we can and can't do in regards to that?
I think you really gave the right background. So the front page of this draft policy ACC, the last lines before you get to the definition do make a reference to the fact that we understand that people have their rights to freedom of expression, which are constitutional, obviously. So our ability to limit conduct is really proportionate to the right. So I think you made an important point. For example, it would be hard to limit someone from coming to a parent-teacher conference. We'd have to find a way to get them that information while still preserving our safe learning environment. If we want to take action because of something that somebody says on social media, we constitutionally as a district are obligated to establish a nexus. In other words, I think what Dr. Anderson talked about is that different levels of our organization, we expect people to have thicker skin sometimes. Certainly true with the superintendent, can be true with our elected officials. We wouldn't expect the same thing for an office manager or a teacher who's dealing with some of that difficult conduct. So because it's constitutional, we really need to take it case by case. But we've attempted here to embed in those essential principles that distinguish protected speech from problematic speech.
Donna?
Just a quick comment on that. It brought to memory, two years ago, there was a teacher bashed at a party on social media at Boulder High School and the police got involved and said, "Do you want to press charges?" So when those kiddos put that stuff out there, they've got to realize there's consequences, not just in our district, but that extend beyond that.
I had a question that was prompted by the, some emails we received from students. Does the Colorado Open Records Act apply to minors? And what could we do to protect them?
So I would say two things. I think that when we're receiving communications from our student body using our BVSD emails, I think arguably those are student records that would be exempted from CORA. I think the other relevant exception is within CORA itself is if a board member received emails from minors, from your constituents, and you can tell from the content of that communication that your constituent expects it to remain private, those are also exempted from CORA. So...
Okay. And we might want to go over that in more depth because I'm trying to let people know that when they email me on that address, that that becomes a public record. It's not clear to everyone who does that. And I sense that some people may not have appreciated that in the last couple of months. Richard?
Is there going to be some form of education on this policy so people will understand what we're talking about? I know of a situation that occurred between a parent and a teacher, not in this district, in another district, where the emails that were sent back and forth, the parent, because she wanted to emphasize a point, would capitalize, you know... the parent, because she wanted to emphasize a point, would capitalize, you know, that kind of stuff, and it just became such a horrible nightmare that that parent was 86 from her child's classroom because they were interpreting that email to be threatening and stuff like that. I took a look at the emails, and I see nothing threatening about it. But anyway, that parent was 86 from her particular child's classroom. So, are we having some education around the policy as it relates to parents understanding what the policy is?
So, the intent would be for the board to study, then approve this policy, and then we would certainly train staff and then create communications for our community. I just think this policy sends a strong message to our community on the things that we value. It sends a strong message to our employees that they're valued and that we want to make sure that they're treated fairly. And so, but training would definitely be a piece to that. And Richard, as, you know, in the event that somebody would have to evoke the code of civility, right, in a conversation or what have you, there's always an appeals process, and we've got a very clear chain of command through our support networks, executive directors and area superintendents standing by to navigate those situations.
Okay, other comments or questions?
It's a good idea.
Okay, great. All right, so with that, so that's on study. And if you have further questions or comments, you can email Rob, or he can work with Kathleen. And then we would move on to our next item, which is a study item, number 12. The 2020 Boulder Valley School District Legislative Platform. We review our platform every year, and then we share it with our locally elected officials who are down at the state legislature. This year, I think we'll be doing that in the format of a lunch at the Capitol, is my understanding, and probably in December. So, and we have three changes that were, came out of a work session we had about a month ago, I think, that we just indicated. That was 3.4 under student privacy, 5.5 under administrations and operations, as well as 5.6. So, any questions or comments on where we are? Kitty?
Well, as usual, I'm the copy editor. So, there's a typo in 3.4, and if you read the sentence, you'll be able to see what it was. And then I have a question about 5.4, and I'm assuming this one applies to the Claire Davis Act. Is that right? But why aren't we just saying we want to repeal it rather than unless they give us adequate funding or other assistance? Because you can have a lot more money, but you still, you're still liable if the schools didn't, you know, figure it out in time. And that's pretty difficult to do.
Right.
So, that's my question, is why aren't we just flat out asking for it to be repealed?
That's a great question. What do we all think? Because I appreciate your point, and I would probably be fine with either iteration.
I mean, it's not like they're going to give us a lot of money for this, but. Still, because it holds schools to a standard, and the taxpayers are the ones who are on the hook for it.
Right. And I think when we talked about this, we talked, we did talk about this idea of there should be a standard, but I think it's really difficult to put a price tag on that standard. I think that is the challenge. So, any comments about that?
And maybe we want to make a statement that that, like several other things the legislature in their wisdom brings to us, is an unfunded mandate, you know? So, if you want to give us the money, then perhaps we can, you know, meet the goals of the legislation, rather than just telling us that, you know, this is the way we have to approach things without the money to sufficiently address it.
Yeah, but I think even with money, how is that going to make a teacher, a counselor, you know, somebody pick up on something that may be extremely subtle? And who decides what should have been known?
Anyone want to weigh in on that? No?
I think that I must have missed the meeting where a lot of stuff got added to our legislative platform, because this is a lot longer and far more detailed than previous legislative platforms. So, for me personally, I'd like to spend some time with it and send my comments in via email.
Okay. I don't think we did add that much to this. Any other thoughts about, we're on study, so we don't need to make any decisions. Right? Kathy?
What would a good discussion be without me saying something about BEST?
What wouldn't, let's see, do I have a smart aleck response?
No, I just want to ask study. BEST is going to run out of funding for large projects after this year, so I would just like to see us add something in that says we would support investigating additional opportunities for funding for BEST in the future, just something along those generalized lines.
Can we replace 2.10? Can we do a swap instead of an add?
I'd be fine. Is that the operational mill? I don't want to take out the opposed effort.
No, it's the one after it, it's the.
So, the one before that, 2.9? I'd be fine with taking out 2.9 and swapping it.
That's what I'm wondering.
No, not really. It just says we don't want to reduce. It doesn't say we want to look for additional new funding, which is what we need to do. If we stay where we are right now, Shelley, there won't be any money to do anything but a few roofs and boilers next year, as opposed to being able to do significant renovations and building new buildings, so reducing.
I think we should work on the language of it so that we don't have to have four different bullet points.
I'm fine with that. I just, I just wanted, because these felt a little old to me, so I'm fine to come up with some proposed language that condenses it.
You know, if Proposition CC had passed, there would have been more of that one-time money in those rural districts. I'm just saying.
But I'm not talking about one-time money. I'm talking about ongoing money for COPs, so it wouldn't really have helped that. And Tina, I have a question for you. Do you think the language that we have in here under 4.3 covers the statutory changes that we're hoping to see be made at the state level around charter schools? I think it's probably broad enough. I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think that's always been good language.
Okay.
It's broad. I do, you know, every year I think I bring this up. I don't, I'm not a huge fan of 2.6. And then I think we should alter 2.7. 2.6, so 2.6 follows the other points that say we should adequately fund all students and all needs, and then it calls out all these special populations. And I don't care for that, because at the end of the day, I think that the school district should control how we allocate funding, rather than have the legislature cherry pick which groups they want to fund that year. So, I would prefer to take out 2.6, and then in 2.7, I think we already did the 1.0, full-day K. And I don't know if we want to put in a, I don't know what adequate funding for early childhood really means in this case. I think we could just say we support, you know, full-day free preschool or something like that.
Can we just, like, all send in our edits on this and get a redline back? I don't remember seeing a redline of this either.
That would be an electronic meeting. I don't think we can all send in edits and incorporate all of them and then redline it.
No, we send them to Kathleen, like individually.
Yeah, but I.
We've done that before.
I think we have, followed by a work session or a board meeting. I don't think we would accept all seven versions and put them all into the platform. I think we'd have to introduce them and talk about them. What?
I just feel like there's so much redundancy in this whole school finance section. You called out one point, but I think this whole thing could be condensed.
Well, I think I said that last year. It could be one paragraph or something, but.
Yeah, or three bullet points would cover all of it. I just feel like this is getting really unwieldy for a legislator to have to look through as they're considering legislation. And it was really always designed to be sort of our philosophy, not direct, like, instruction on how they, and there's so much jargon in it.
Well, I think, we do have certain bullet points here that respond to specific items that come up every year. And so, you know, and so it's kind of like, well, if kindergarten comes up, yes, we like it, so you don't need to call us. I mean, our lobbyists know that, you know.
They've been there for a long time. The new ones are very, very specific and won't stand the test of time, I don't think.
I don't know if this needs to stand the test of time. We do it every year. I, and I think that's why we do it every year, is that it's more of a current document, I think. It's for one year, and it kind of lapses on, in May, more or less, but.
Well, I agree that sometimes less is more. Just on looking at these, it just seems so redundant, and it's like, I think we could be a little more concise.
Well, we could do that right now. We could talk about, I mean, I just propose that we get rid of 2.7 and shorten 2..
Can we, do we need 2.8 this year? Couldn't we get rid of 2.8? I don't know that PRA is coming up this year.
Whoops, we have a maybe, okay.
But really, will our lobbyists go lobby against PRA if it's not in our platform? I'm just wondering if it needs to stay there, that's all. Because these are supposed to be our top priorities, so I would, I guess I would advocate taking out 2.8 since we kind of crossed that bridge, when was it, two years ago, on the big PRA rewrite?
Right, and then when we look at 2.4, are people still talking about a mill levy? Meaning the mill levies are local mill levies, not the property tax mill levies? Is that coming up again? Because that's something we might, yeah. So, that's something we might want to call out very specifically.
That's what I was thinking with the whole mill levy equalization conversation.
Yeah, because we probably need to have some kind of opinion on that. What is our opinion on that? Where are we?
That's a good question.
Can you be more specific? I'm going to give this one a cap again.
Well, if Bill would correct me if I wander too far afield from the accurate facts, I'm happy to. Is that all right? So.
Well, Bill, why don't you come on up to the podium, just in case there's any clarification. I think that what the board is discussing is the proposed legislation around mill levy.
Equalization.
Mill levy equalization or standardization, so.
So, I would, I would call it the uniform mill levy rather than equalization. So, a standard mill levy across the state, set at some number, maximum number, that you're either, have to go up to that number, call it 27 mills, or the number of mills that would fully fund your district. We're at just over 25 right now, so.
And I don't think we've taken a position on that, Tina. I don't. A lot's going to depend on what the legislation looks like. Because the big issue for me, it's not as big a deal for Boulder, because we're so close, is what happens to the districts that aren't close? And do you use carrots or sticks, or what does that look like?
How long does it take? What kind of glide path?
Well, first you have to decide you like the idea before you even get to the how-long-it-takes part, right? And I don't think we've even had that conversation. So, I don't know what to do about that. Maybe we just leave a general language until we have something specific to address.
Well, and then the first sentence under governance says that "Our legislators are urged to contact us before proposing or supporting significant changes to state law." So, I think we're covered.
Okay.
Maybe we should bold that sentence.
Underline.
What?
Underline it.
And like in red? Maybe that should be our number-one strategy.
Can I ask Bill one more question? Do you think anything that would come up about PRA would be anything other than tweaking? Would be our, if we took it out? I mean, you attend those meetings. I have no way of, that's just my guess.
There's only one little tweak that's being suggested, which would lessen the impact next year and push it out a little bit, because of the automatic adjustment.
So, if we took it out of here, it really wouldn't be material as a priority for our lobbyists?
Not as a priority. It perhaps gives guidance to staff or the lobbyists as to which way to go on something.
There's one side of the aisle that somebody seems to consistently attack PRA. And so, I feel like for that, I'd like it to stay in. But a point of process, Tina, how are we doing this? Is it just like one of us has an idea that we'd like, and then, and then do we poll the delegation? Or this is always a, every year, a kind of a little bit of a challenge. And so, if we are wordsmithing this tonight, how are we going to decide what is staying in or out, or?
Well, it's on study tonight, and we can do this again, you know, for action. But we do have to vote on it, so it has to come back to a vote. So, that's when we would vote on all the changes. But I don't believe we need to go, and correct me if I'm wrong, through a motion to change. It's not a policy. Is that correct?
It's not a policy. I don't know how you've done it in prior years.
It's been like this, yeah. We vote on it at the next meeting, yeah, so.
So, we won't be voting on it?
Right, which is why I just want to make some notes, because like the previous, it feels like this, there's, you already suggested taking three points out, which I think should be done usually. And I just think it's not ready for finalizing. It needs to, I don't know, look at it.
Right.
Maybe one or more meetings, I don't know.
I don't mind doing more than one meeting, but I don't think we should do it over email. I think we need, you know, we all have this. We've all talked about it before. We talked about different things in the last work session. We agreed on a couple changes which were put in, which we can take out if you don't like them anymore. It's totally fine, and that's what we're here to do. So, it's not a homework assignment so much as it is the next time we come together, you should know what you want to change, and we can decide whether we do it or not. I mean, I think that's how we do it.
So, question of procedure, when's our legislator lunch?
When is our legislator lunch?
December 16th.
Oh, it's a lunch. And do we have a meeting before that where we could finalize this? It seems like we'd want to have this closer to finalize before we have that lunch.
You have a regular board meeting on December?
10th.
Is it 10th? Yeah, the 10th.
I would also say, you know, as we think about the legislative platform and its purpose, right? And I think Bill articulated that this allows staff and our lobbyists to understand our positions on a variety of things. In the event at the 11th hour, we get a call, which happens a lot during session, "Hey, are you for it, against it, neutral? Will you come talk about it?" It gives staff guidance and direction. Now, as we think about the legislative lunch that we're going to have, we can certainly have a conversation on the three to five points we want to make when we have our delegation in front of us. It doesn't have to be, let's go line by line around the legislative platform. We could talk about the three, four, and I would say in a meeting like that, three to four things that are relevant and are important that we feel like are getting traction at the Capitol would be, would be, that'd be a great time to do that. But as we think about what's the purpose of the legislative platform, if you trim it down too much, I think it could have the potential to limit us as we have to engage during session at the 11th hour, where there's no way to pull the board together to get an opinion on what's happening or not. But to Shelley's point, and to the point that others of you have made, do we roll out this, you know, two-and-a-half-page document to our delegation as we meet with them? You know, I don't know that that would be the most effective strategy.
Yeah, but I do like your point. There needs to be some specificity, and I think that is important. And I don't think we're going to get it down to one page anyway, so we might as well say what we want to say.
And Rob, I think it doesn't hurt to have this as finalized as we can. We can still prioritize. But this would be a chance for them to ask us questions, so if we don't give them anything, I would advocate that we give them something at that meeting.
Yeah. So, I mean, are there, so we already did have a work session on this, and we. So, I mean, are there, so, so we already did have a work session on this, and we didn't hear a lot of changes on this same document. So, so we should be fairly comfortable with this document at this point, so... You got that one? Okay. And so, and we do agree that we, we have, we're going to get rid of 2.9, Kathy, that that doesn't make sense.
I'm fine that I was hoping we could, I could, I could say supports efforts.
And you're on 2.10?
Yeah.
So supports efforts to fund with the best program?
Yeah, because I think in that way, it actually implies that you would oppose an effort to reduce it.
And then going to just 2.7? BVSD supports full 1.0 FTE funding of preschool period? Is that accurate? Anyone? Well, we have to take out the kindergarten preschool, we already got that. A voluntary preschool, sorry. Is everyone okay with that change?
So when you say 1.0, right now, we only fund half day, so is that implying that we would, we're advocating for full day preschool funded by the state?
Voluntary.
I know, but I'm just asking if that's the intent.
I don't know. I, I would think we would want full day preschool, but the option of full day or half day, I know you, you mean...
And do we, and my question is, do we want that as a higher priority than repealing the negative factor, the BS factor, and fully funding and all of that? To me, it's a, it's not as high a priority as the other funding things.
Well, it's currently below them.
Are these by priority?
I don't think they're really by priority.
I'm just thinking that the governor, that's one that's going to be, one of his highest priorities, even over all the other funding priorities that we have. And I worry that if we don't prioritize this, that we look like we're supporting that over higher priority budget items. So maybe if we could just say we support it, I don't know how we would word it, but it's not as high a priority in my mind as reducing the negative factor and funding the programs that are already on our plate.
So would you, what if we wrote something like BVSD supports the funding for preschool, but would prefer money that isn't earmarked? And we could be specific, it can have a one-year expiration date.
Supports full day preschool funding, but not at the expense of funding the negative factor or something like that. Something like that, just so that there's a prioritization in here.
Could you all please turn on your microphones?
I tried. Other folks have to turn their microphones off.
Sorry about that. Okay, so, and who's... Is someone taking notes on this, or shall I take notes? You're taking notes, okay.
I'm fine, Shelley, taking out 2.6 because I think it gets supported by the others.
Is everyone okay taking out 2.6?
I am.
You are, okay? Donna?
Yes.
Okay.
Kathy, didn't you say 2.9, we're taking out 2.9?
Yes. Yeah, we're just condensing it to one general statement.
So is there any legislation being thought of in terms of increasing ALPA funding, for example?
What funding?
ALPA, undersigned with proficiency.
That's part of the overall funding that would come to us. If they fill the negative factor, then we could use that money to pay for ALPA. I think that's the thinking, Richard, is we want them to just give us back the money that they took through the negative factor, and we'll figure out how to allocate it.
But I do want to support the, the full day preschool as a, as a priority.
It's, that's in there.
Yeah.
And do you like it as full day or half day?
Full day. I mean, my, my experience with, with the two visits today, and asking why some of those kids are not, why there's so many few kids in terms of Latino kids that are not in preschool program, especially at Sanchez, and the response was it's not, because it's half day.
I'm fine with the full day, Richard. I just think it's, to me, it's a lower priority than getting the negative factor back. And if we got that back, we might even be able to allocate more to preschool.
Okay. Any other comments on the, yes?
I just wanted to go back to the Claire Davis, and just, are, are we okay with just saying we oppose it? I mean, we'd like to see it repealed rather than adding the piece about unless they give us money.
This is 5.4.
Yeah, yes. And can't we just call it the Claire Davis Act?
Thoughts? Donna, do you have any thoughts?
I don't have a thought on it.
You don't?
Either way, it would work for me.
Okay. Kathy, do you have an opinion?
The only language I like in it, but contrary to what I've said before, is other assistance to districts to improve school safety. But again, if we get the negative factor back, then we could use it for school safety.
I don't think we're going to get the negative factor back.
I know, I'm just trying to be consistent, and, and that language I like. Yeah, a whole 40 million this year. Woo-hoo!
Didn't there used to be just general language about unfunded mandates in here?
Yeah, it's still there. Why isn't this one covered by that? Well, this is, I think you need to call it out because it was passed recently, and it was passed without any funding attached to it.
I mean, I'm just opposed, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, how is that different than any other unfunded mandate that they pass? Like, I know it's recent, but it's still an unfunded mandate, it's covered by the broader...
Yeah, but I think it might come up again, so I think it's good to be specific.
And I think we can just say we support the repeal of it and not go into the unfunded mandate, because there's separate reasons.
Yeah, I agree. I'm, I'm, I think it was a knee-jerk reaction that they didn't think through very well of what would really be the implications of it, and how would, you know, what's the standard for you should know? And what does that mean for the taxpayers? And if this happened in a small rural district and they were sued, it would be devastating for them.
Was the law waiving period after immunity?
I think after violence.
After violence.
How does everyone feel about that? Kathy's fine with that? You okay with that, Donna?
Yeah.
So I was going to suggest we jump back up to student privacy and just look at that section. We looked at the twos. So in the threes, there was added a fourth, 3.4, which would be new. So, so I'm just calling it out because it was added since the last time, and we haven't seen it there. Does everyone feel okay with that?
Student privacy.
Mm-hmm, 3.4.
Shelley, are you okay with it? Because I kind of defer to you on these issues. Okay.
All right, so going to educational perform, programming, I don't think we changed anything there. I do ask whether, we've always been told to keep that access one, three, 4.2 in. Are we still doing access? Think we are? Access testing? Yes? 4.2.
Robin says yes.
Okay, then we, then we keep it in? All right. Now, can we take off 4.5? Did they just do that? No, 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 okay. No, 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 she says, okay. Sorry. Is 5.2 still a thing? Wait, now we're going to fives. All right. 5.2. Oh, yeah.
It seems really specific. Do we need that?
Yeah, that was specific. Who, who likes, I know that Rob Price maybe likes that one, 5.2. Do you still want 5.2?
But is it still an issue? Do we need legislation?
Oh, wow! Wow! And 5.3?
That'd be a question for Bill.
This is any further reduction in allowed retention requirements in school district capital construction contracts. Okay.
But do we need to keep it?
We keep this. So he could make it more specific. All right. Anything else?
Perfectly clear to your average legislator what the abuse of discretion standard is?
Where are you, Shelley?
5.5.
That's what I mean about getting very, very specific.
But that one's really important, Shelley, to keep it that specific, because we're, the, the current standard is best interest of the community, which allows the board to, the state board to decide that they know better than we do what's in our community interests, and so that's why that language is in there.
Well, I understand that, but I'm asking, would your average legislator understand that? That's very specific to...
No, I know, but there's part of this as an education piece, and we don't put the exact language that we want, we just say abuse of discretion.
I think that's a, a good talking point, when we meet with our legislators, to talk about what that looks like. 5.6 is new on vaping. Is everyone okay with the vaping language? All right. So if you think of something that isn't covered here, we could bring it up at the next meeting, or you can email Rob. All right. Kathleen, can you do a redlined revised copy?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that, and I'm redlining it against last year's actually adopted platform, right? Yeah.
Yes. All right. Any other comments about the legislative platform or the legislative luncheon or breakfast? No? All right. Our next item is agenda setting. Again, we're going to be discussing our agenda setting process when our whole new board is together, to make sure that we're doing it in the best way we can. But in the meantime, are there any burning issues that people want to bring up? Either through a request for information, through the RFI form on the library and the board docs, or emailing Rob? Bring it up during your check-in? Anything? All right. Okay, with that, let's adjourn the meeting.